The mirror, you could see yourself walking back. Just FYI. Good afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear me? I know there. City of Palm Valley is on mute. Jason Mann is on mute. I think I'm on mute.
I could hear you, Mayor.
Oh, there you go. Mike, Jason, how are you, sir?
I'm good. Thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Did you survive? Did you survive LBA 40?
I did. We had a wonderful event. Went well.
I bet you guys did. Congrats.
Thank you. Successful tournament.
Palm Valley, can you guys hear me? Eric, Jerry, I see you guys.
Jerry, you heard the one about the mayor's offense and the rabbi?
There's a, there's a lot of, oh, there you go. There was a lot of static. I guess. It's gone now. Now it's back. Now it's gone.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, John. How about you?
Good. Good to see you.
Man, it's been, it's been a long time.
Yeah, I think Monica reported to you guys last.
Yeah, well.
Nice, nice to be here.
Had to be pre-pandemic the last time I saw you, young man.
I'll tell you what, I don't know about young, but we're getting there. Michael, how are you doing?
Good on yourself?
Good, good. Good to see you guys.
You know, there, there, there is some, some static going on. When people, I guess, are not talking. Can you check? Is there something open?
On my side, when I, when I. When I say go to the city of Palm Valley screen, that's when you start getting that sound.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when you start getting that sound.
Can, am I, can you all hear me? Yes, Mr. Gorgeous, we sure can. We could also see you. Yes, sir. Elsa, go ahead and place everybody on mute except for city council members. Let's see what that does. Because there is some static when we see City Hall.
I think there's an open mic or something over there at City Hall.
It could be an open mic somewhere that's not in front of you guys. Something is doing a lot of feedback.
We've only got these three that are open.
That's it. Okay, that's gone now. That's gone. It's gone. So it's whatever you guys just did, it's. I spoke too soon.
She turned it off.
Yeah, it's light. I turned it off. It went away.
Okay.
Oh.
It's gone now. It's gone now. Okay, that's better.
I caused a lot of static. And your problem solved, Mr. Excellent. What about Cynthia and Lisa? What's going on?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I've got 5:58. Is that what you guys have? We'll give a couple of more minutes. Well, we don't have a quorum if. Oh, no, we do have a quorum. Michael, I saw you. I saw you on there. Yeah. Yeah, alright.
Hello.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
Well, according to my Microsoft laptop, I have 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order.
I know Cynthia is about to log on if you want to give her just a second.
It's okay. We will, we will do the, the, the order of the agenda. So please. Everybody where you're at, please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our mayor pro tem, Michael Galvan, is going to lead us on legislative prayer.
Okay, please bow your heads. Dear Lord, first, let me thank you on behalf of the mayor, city council, city staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Palm Valley. Thank you for your many blessings, good health and life itself that we need to fulfill our callings. I pray for the agenda set before us today and continue to guide us to do our very best for the citizens of Palm Valley and the ability to work together in harmony. It's in your name, your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, item number four. It's that time of year again. It's, oh, I'm sorry, before we even get to item number four. Please, Sylvia, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
Here, Zoom.
Councilman Eric Hoff. Councilman Jerry Wade.
Here.
Councilwoman Lisa Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Michael Galvan.
Present on Zoom.
Okay, I still don't have Cynthia.
Mayor, I just got a text from Councilwoman Thompson that she was having trouble logging in and she's, she's attempting to log in.
No worries.
Yeah, Mayor.
Keep on going. Who else is on the, there at the City Hall, Sylvia?
I'm sorry.
Continue with your roll call, please.
Oh, I'm done, Mayor.
Sylvia, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Are you, are you, are you going to continue with the roll call?
I'm done. I'm just waiting.
Oh, you're done. Okay, I'm sorry. Alright, then let's move on. Item number four. Presentation, acceptance of the city's annual audit for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020. We have Quentin Anderson on the line. Is that correct? Quentin, are you on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. Mayor, members of the council. We've worked with your finance department to complete the annual financial report and I'm here to give you an overview. I believe you had an opportunity to get some draft reports over the weekend and I'm going to highlight information in the financial report. If I think, I'm hoping somebody can help me share my screen because I'm gonna, I'm going to jump back and forth through the report with, by, by screen sharing. It looks like, looks like I'm able to do that. Can you guys see the?
There you go.
On the screen?
Yes, sir. I can see it. We can see it quick. Thank you.
We changed our colors.
Love it. Love that blue and gold.
Don't make it look like, like Notre Dame. I'm not sure that was our intent, but, okay. So the report includes our independent auditors report, which we'll jump to. There's a section called management's discussion and analysis. There are new, no new financial statement items within the report. So it's pretty similar in fashion and format to last year. There's government-wide financial statements, which essentially are consolidated statements. And then there's a presentation on your general fund, which is your governmental fund, and water, water service fund, your proprietary activities. Includes notes to the financial statements and since some required supplementary information includes a budget presentation. You've chosen to put some supplementary information in the report, which is comparative schedules for the general fund and the water fund. And then, then because you're a government, we also, in accordance with government auditing standards, look at, at controls over financial reporting and compliance. We've had, we have a separate report in the back of the report that I'll turn to, too. So in looking at, at the independent auditors report, we, it says we've audited the financial statements and, and in essence, in the second page, our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So we worked with, with Mr. Vino and your personnel to make various adjustments for accruals and things of that nature. And, and the financial statements are reflective of your financial position as of the end of the fiscal year. So again, there's required supplementary information, which includes the management's discussion and analysis, a good narrative overview of the statements, and it includes a budgetary presentation schedule. Both of those items were included in the prior year. And then we also have some other supplementary information that you chose to present, as I mentioned. And, and then our report, in accordance with government auditing standards, that deals with financial reporting and, and compliance. And so we'll jump to that report at the end. So I'm going to jump into some comparative schedules as a point of, and I hope if you can squint your eyes, you can see this table, but in the MDNA on page 10, there's a good comparison of the governmental activities and the business-type activities. Again, you know, general fund and water and sewer services. And, and what we've got in, in, in a real summarized fashion, the general fund total assets dropped, you know, from 2.2 million to 2.1. When we look at the operating statement on the next page, we'll see that you guys, you know, made a decision and a planned decision to transfer $150,000 out of the general fund into the water fund. And you'll see a corresponding, similar type increase of total assets in the, in the business-type activities, right? It went from 3 million up to 3.2 million. Part of that's operations and part of that is that $150,000 transfer. So when we look at the operating statement on the next page, your net position dropped mostly as a result of that transfer in it. So it just went from here to here, along with the results of operations. So this colorful chart is useful because it tells you that, you know, 48% of your revenue sources, you know, come from user charges. Water and sewer services and, and court fines and, and traffic fines, things of that nature. And, and 36% from property taxes. Other taxes include, include your sales tax and franchise fees. And those are your major sources of revenue. When we look at the operating statement, very consolidated, concise presentation, we've got total revenues in governmental activities pretty, pretty comparable with the prior year, $938,000, total $942,000. There's a little drop in charges for services. You know, during the pandemic and during lockdowns, I think there was less in the curfew. I mean, there's less activity in terms of fines and, and fees, and that's part of what, what that decline is. And, and then the rest of your sources are very, very, very comparable. The miscellaneous revenue compared to the prior year included a couple of items. There was a, I think, a $16,000 amount of, or $14,000 you got in COVID funds that was included in that activity. And, and then another $16,000, which is reimbursement for debris pickup that you had paid to a contractor. So your overall expenses, they increased. They were 772, went up to 851. We've got an increase in, in general government. And, and part of that activity includes, you guys decided to have a, you know, there was a, there was a, one time, a increase in, in compensation for, for, you know, this pandemic-related incentive compensation. You know, that was nearly, nearly $12,000. And then there was legal fees you guys incurred. You had some litigation during the year. You know, nearly $17,000, part of what's included in there. So as well as other COVID-related expenses that were about $9,500. But overall, the governmental activity went from 772 to 851, still had a surplus. We're going to see when we look at the budget, there was a couple areas where you're over budget because of those things. But you still ended up with the surplus for the year. And then you transferred $150,000 out from governmental activities to business-type activities. So overall, water sewer service revenue is very, very comparable last year, $787,778. Expenditures down just a little bit at 743. The water sewer fund had, had $43,000 of revenues in excess of expenses and the transfer in of $150,000. That's a really concise presentation of some more detailed financial statements, but it does a good job in, in kind of giving you an overview of what happened in the statements. This, this chart on page 12 tells you capital, what capital assets were during the year. And that obviously your biggest investment on the city's financial statements are your capital assets. And there were some various projects going on. Right here is a little highlight. There, you know, the, the Palm Valley's drainage project. Maybe $180,000 happening in their city hall repairs. It's a police department unit, new PD unit and some furniture in the, in the commission room. So that's pretty summarized. See, the notes to the financial statements gives you a whole lot of detailed information on, on the capital assets. And you can, you can look through those, those notes as well. So that's a broad overview. These are the detailed financial statements where you can find out what, what each category of assets and liabilities were. I think it's, it's good to note, at least at this point in time, there wasn't any long-term debt, right? I know that's changed. You approved subsequent year-end, you know, three and a half million dollars of debt. You're looking at other, other potential debt opportunities, if you want to call them that. But at the end of the year, there was no, there was no long-term notes payable. So your overall net position between the governmental activities and business-type activities is $5.3 million. And, and we saw the change when we looked at the previous financial statement. Total net position increased by $131,000 between the two governmental and business-type activities. I'm going to jump to, I'm going to jump back to a couple of schedules and required supplementary information. We talked about your, your budget a little bit. You have a budgetary presentation schedule. And, and, and the budget, there's, your overall revenue is a little bit higher than, than you originally anticipated in your budget. And then your expenditures, they were also higher. So we had some few instances where, where, you know, you were over budget. We made a comment about that because the budget is something that, you know, the council approves and that represents kind of the level of authority for expenditure there. We ended up, as I mentioned earlier, it was some legal fees, you know, in this area of general government that, that you probably didn't originally anticipate. And you didn't, although you, you knew you had them and you authorized to pay them, you didn't think forward to amend the budget for that. So that's what causes part of that variance. And then we had the additional compensation you paid out and incentive paid during, during the pandemic. So. Little bit.
Quentin, if you don't, if you mind, I just want to make sure that the council understands this particular part here. Council, you, you were aware of the litigation that we approved to pay our attorney to defend the, the lawsuit brought to, to the city at one time. You also remember that we went through a hurricane in this particular time period. I, as mayor, made an executive decision to make sure that we picked up all the debris out of our city. So there was no time for a city council decision, but all, all of you were aware of this situation. So just want to make sure that, that, and as far as the police department, that's part of the COVID relief act that we received funds from the US government to, to pay for that extra cost on it. And that's where you see the extra revenue in the miscellaneous areas. And we're still waiting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Quentin. Quentin, you stated that some of the expenditures that were slightly over the actual budget were caused by, and American confirmed, by the city having to spend money on legal fees in fighting the lawsuits that were brought against the city that ultimately the city prevailed in the lawsuits. Do you recall how much money was wasted having to pay lawyers to defend that lawsuit? And where does that show up on page 39 under expenditures?
On, on page 39, Councilwoman, it appears in the general government. It's part of this, this excess here. Part of this came, came from extra duty pay, incentive pay you had because of the, because of the pandemic. But there's six, my records show there's $16,900 of additional legal fees in that number. Okay? I don't, you use the words of whether you ever paying an attorney is a waste of money, but I never heard attorney say that, but.
Actually, attorneys do say that when it's a frivolous lawsuit, but.
Yeah, well, anyway, it's, it's in that category. And then what the mayor was mentioning, too, you had, you know, a lot of expenses in debris removal. And I would agree, you know, you needed to have that done.
Sure.
And, and our, our comment in the, in the compliance report is simply that, you know, when, as you recognize that, that there's going to be some additional, you talk about them, you approve them, you authorize them, then the additional step is, and we revised our budget, right? And, and so it's not, I don't think, and our finding will say, we don't think you spent any money in an unauthorized fashion. You just didn't do the accounting process of the, of, of miniing the budget. So, but those are good things noted and we discussed that.
I just wanted it clear that basically over 20% of the, of the actual expenditures for the fiscal year that were over budget were due to having to pay attorney's fees to defend the lawsuit that was brought against the city by the, 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 the group here that was trying to prevent us from doing the, the projects.
Okay. And then the rest of the big variances from the debris removal. So.
Okay.
All right.
Before you continue, I just want to make a brief little statement. The city councilwoman Cynthia Thompson is now in the meeting. Just want to make sure that's on the record that she, she is in the meeting now. Please continue, Quentin. Sorry.
Okay, thanks. So, so that's a, you know, there are some comparative schedules. If you want to look at, at general fund and, and the water fund from one year to the next. I think the information in the MDNA was a pretty good summarized comparison. So I'm going to jump past this information. And, and then that compliance section where we, we, because you're a government, you know, there's, there's various rules and things that you comply with, including bidding and including budgeting, including Public Funds Investment Act and including, you know, having your deposits collateralized properly at the bank. Those are the type of compliance things we're looking for. And then we also look at, at controls over financial reporting. And so we made some recommendations in, in our report. And, and, you know, last year we had talked to you guys about our concern over IT security and logical access controls. And, and basically, you know, that got, that continued during the year, but it got corrected. You made appropriate revisions to your procedures and policies. This is a carryover from the prior year. Our, our corrective action will show that that's no longer an issue. And so that's no longer an issue. So let me back us up here. Yeah. So that was the first comment, 202001. That was a carryover. You, you, you made an error during the current year in the accounting process and didn't, didn't record probably tax levy. That was a pretty big number, you know, and so it caused some, your balance sheet to be out of whack. And, and we worked with, with Mr. Vino to get that adjusted and talk, and, and we've ensured that she's got that properly adjusted for the current year. So you don't, that issue doesn't carry over into the year you're presently in. But we made some recommendations about that. And then the budgetary process, we talked. When we gave you guys the draft on Friday, the wording in this, this section of the report was a little bit different. Because we weren't making it clear that, you know, we seem to imply that, you know, you guys spent money in an unauthorized fashion and that wasn't the case. You, you had these expenditures, you've been authorized by appropriate officials, but you didn't take the next step to amend the budget. So that was the nature of our recommendation, not that you're spending money without authorization. So.
And that was duly, duly noted, Quentin. And that was, I will take full responsibility on that, City Council. Thinking that just the approval of the council was all we needed. However, I was wrong and we will make sure that from now on, we will do some, some budget adjustments at, at the time of the expense.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the, the financial report. We also had, had another report that I believe Mr. Vino forwarded out to you guys. And it was, you know, typically the report we have each year on required communications. I'm going to pull that up on my screen. Can you guys see that? Required communications for the council?
Yes.
Okay, so. Which in here are pretty similar to prior years. It talks about, you know, our role under general accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards and management's role. Talks about the timing of the audit, judgments that are involved in that process, talks about accounting policies. There is nothing unique to the city of Palm Valley. It's, it's kind of maybe unique to governmental entities. But, but you wouldn't find anything that we probably didn't have in a similar report to any other government that we've issued. So there were some adjustments made in the audit process and we attached those for your review. And you want to include that, you know, correcting your, your property tax levy and accrual. Didn't run across any matters that we thought were fraud or illegal activities during the audit process. None of that came to our attention. We'd, we would let you know about that if we did. And then we also made some, there's the adjusted entries that we, that I'm referring to. We made some, we get a representation from management about their role and responsibility. And, and then we made some other recommendations. So we, we, we reviewed these with the mayor and with Mr. Vino and your personnel. None of these were considered to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So there, there are the types of things that really, you know, for us, we're looking for more documentation of a review process, right? Which is hard with the limited number of people that you have. But, you know, we're, we're not implying you're not reconciling vacant pounds, but we, we're suggesting that. We're, we're suggesting that they get reviewed initialled, uh, to evidence that documentation. And we, we also made some recommendations similarly, uh, dealing with, you know, um. You know, documenting the second review over other reconciliation processes. We found an error in, um. Nine forty one payroll reports and, and you actually brought this to our attention. So. Uh, you had made a, you know, clerical error, got a refund from the IRS. You probably owe that back. We'd make, we recommended that you. That you amend that nine forty one. And we'll work with Sylvia to make sure that, that's done, uh, correctly. We made a comment about, uh, uh, your accounting for compensated absences. And that's a fancy way of saying. You know, vacation or time off. And, and you've got a, you keep in some internal records that are inconsistent with. The policy that, that's, uh, that the state's adopted. And we, we recommend that you just take a look at that. And, you know, either go.
Take a look at that. Let me, uh, yeah, let me take, let me, let me take some time here and explain to the council what this, what this is here, uh, council. So, um, about a year ago, it was brought to my attention that there's a couple of employees that we have that has accumulated. Vacation, uh, that we have not paid for. So I don't know when this started, how it started. Uh, but it is, it is an accrual there. Now. Our policy states that the accrual has to be approved by the mayor. Well, we don't have any mayor approving the accrual, unfortunately. I know for the past six years that I've been mayor. Uh, I've never approved, uh, the accumulation of this, of this compensated.
Mayor, I may, I may, I may be misunderstanding what you're saying, but I think what the policy says. The accrual of any amounts in excess of the, of the cap approved by the policy would have to be approved by the mayor. So. You guys have recorded, uh. A, a number up to the policy cap. And we're saying you, you're maintaining records that go beyond that. Uh, and that's what the mayor's talking about. And so that would have, have to have some other kind of approval, I presume. But. But what you've reflected on your books is consistent with a policy that has a cap.
Correct. So any of a council, my point is, we will talk about this in April's meeting. Uh, of the, the extra item that is on there, but what Quentin is talking about is absolutely correct. But, but we do have an issue. Uh, that we need to discuss and make a decision. So just want to make sure. Uh, that you guys understand where this is coming from. Uh, and we will have, uh, an agenda item in April, uh, to discuss this. Sorry, Quentin. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. The last comment, uh, you know, you guys. You've got utility billing registers that are, you know, they're, they're, you know, big documents. You're keeping them on, on paper. Uh, and, and we know that we've had. Water issues, flooding issues. We're making recommendations. Somehow you, you, you. Get the, those backed up in some type of electronic version. Cause if you lose those binders of, of papers you've lost. Uh, or if they're damaged or destroyed, fire or flood. You know, I think you're exposed to not having, having those records. We may, we, I think perhaps if you work with your IT. That electronically you can back that stuff up. Uh, and we may suggest them to do that. So. That's it. Those are our comments and, and, uh. We, we, um. You guys have, have this, uh, final report in your possession. I think that, uh. Bobby very out here. With your bond advisors or investment advisors looking for this, uh. So it's ready when you're ready to, to hand it out.
Thank you very much, council. Council, does any, uh, any, any questions for Quentin before we let him go?
Jamie, the motion to accept this.
We have a motion for mayor Hock. Do we accept the city's annual audit?
A second.
Councilwoman, decent Taylor seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Quentin, I appreciate it as always. This is my sixth, sixth audit with you and thank you very much. Uh, it's getting, they're getting better and better every year. So, uh, I thank you for, for the, uh, all the work that you do for us.
I, I stopped sharing my screen. So you make sure I'm, I'm not leaving.
Oh, you're, no, I, I see you.
Okay.
I see you.
No, uh. You guys have the screen back. I appreciate the time. Uh, have a good meeting.
Thank you, Quentin. We'll talk soon. Next item is item number five. Presentation of fees and fine collections and activity report by Lon Lineberger, Dogan Blair and Sampson. We have Mr. John Givara, uh, with us this evening. John, welcome. You might be on mute.
There you go. Hi, Mayor. How are you doing? Good to see everybody.
Hi, John.
John, good to hear from you again.
Yes. Uh, so I need to be able to share my screen.
I think we're looking at it right now, sir.
Okay. You're looking at my screen?
Uh, we're looking at your, uh. Their report. Now, I don't know if it's your screen or Elsa's screen.
Can you see it? Can you see it moving or?
We do not see it moving.
Okay. Well, I'll go with, I'll go with a screen that you have and I'll just ask to advance whenever we get to that page. Is that okay?
No, actually, uh, it'd be probably best Elsa, can you make sure that he, uh, shares the screen with all of us? So that way he could.
He's good.
He's good. You're ready to go, John.
Okay. So you, you can see it moving right now. All right.
No, I, well, I can't. Is it just me? If you guys could see it, I'm, I'm okay. Cause I've got the, the hard copy.
I've got both.
I don't see it moving, John, but, uh, I, I've got the hard copy.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll, I'll just refer to the page number if that's okay with everyone.
Okay, sir.
It's a pleasure to be before you guys. I recognize several of you in the audience. And so, and, and of course the council members. So it's really nice to see everyone, uh, especially my nineteen eighty two classmate. And I won't mention any names. But, uh, class of eighty two. Uh, so on page one, basically what you have is a, a quick summary of the collections of. Uh, as of January, when we turned in this report. And then also the contract to date. So the very first bar chart, you know, it has about ten lines. And what I want to draw attention to is the number of citations that were assigned to us in January, which was fourteen. Uh, totaling about forty three hundred dollars. And so that, that's given to us every month we get, uh, we get the placements. So then at the end of, of January, the, the citations that were resolved were seven. And the amount resolved was a little over twenty four hundred dollars. Um, and that means resolve means they either paid or they went in it to talk to the defendant, went in and talked to the judge. And the judge made an adjustment or canceled, uh, or did something, uh, to correct the records. So. Uh, total amount resolved was, was about twenty four hundred dollars and, and some change. Uh, on the contract to date, you know, same numbers. So far. You've given us about just under sixteen hundred accounts totaling four hundred and forty five thousand, uh, eight hundred. And then at the bottom of that bar chart, you can see the citations was resolved to date a hundred and fifty seven. Total amount resolved forty three thousand, uh, for about a ten percent resolution rate. Uh, recall that we started collections around the end of twenty eighteen. Uh, we didn't get that much going. We, we, it, it took mainly getting all the records, uh, into our system and getting it to function. But you really started seeing some income in October, November and December of twenty eighteen. And then twenty nineteen was, was just a really good year. So, you know, that's a quick summary of, of where we've come, uh, you know, since twenty eighteen. Uh, bottom line, at the very bottom of page one, you can see, uh, the collection activity. We, we've sent out, uh. Two thousand one hundred and fifty letters. Uh, address corrections, about four hundred and forty three. So that's about. Twenty eight percent of the total number of accounts that you've given us. There's been some issue with the address that we've been able to do some re- research on, and that's a continuing process. People move. And we, we keep track of that. We work not only the new cases, but the old ones. And I'll get into that a little bit further into the report. But, uh, bottom line, uh, you know, you can see the address update, the phone activity. We've received a hundred and twenty eight inbound calls on behalf of the city. But more importantly, we placed fourteen thousand calls on behalf of the city, uh, you know, from our call center. On page two. Uh, you'll see the status of open accounts. Uh, and that's just, that's the only bar chart on page two. Uh, bottom line, we have one thousand four hundred and seventeen accounts that are open totaling a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, owed to the city. On page three. I wanted to point out that this is a, a monthly collection activity for each of the last twenty four months. And you can see it starts out with, or, you know, the last month was January. We mailed eighty eight letters. Uh, we updated eleven accounts, uh. But what I really wanted to point out on here is we typically have two major sweeps during the year. Last year we were going to have a summer sweep. But COVID hit and then we had a hurricane. So we kind of put that aside. We want to do it again this summer. Uh, and reattempt it. But typically we'll have a winter sweep and then we'll have a fall sweep. Uh, so it, it just kind of depends on, um. You know, what, what, uh, day of the month, we want the, the mailings to fall on. Uh, where, what we see on income tax returns that usually generates income. So. On this particular chart, you can see in twenty twenty. Uh, if you look at September, uh, we had two hundred and thirty three letters mailed out and that kind of sticks out over the rest of the, of the chart. That was our, that was our fall, uh, sweep. Uh, and then that triggers income for October, November, December. Uh, so you can kind of see the activity there. And then the, the spring sweep was done in February. You can see the two twenty one and that triggered, uh, some activity the last week of February and then March and April. Uh, so you can see what those do to your collections. Uh, we, like I said, we didn't really get to do a summer sweep in, in twenty twenty, but. We will do, we have it planned for twenty twenty one. So we'll be doing three major sweeps. Uh, this year, uh, and, uh, so anyway, that, that's an interesting chart that gives you that kind of information. Um, you can see the same thing in twenty nineteen, our sweep and our, our fall sweep was in October, a hundred and sixty seven letters. Uh, and then, uh, in March was the, was the spring winter sweep. Uh, if you look on page four. I wanted to point out the, a whole lot of things on this chart, but. You, you basically, you know, I talked about the one thousand four hundred and seventeen accounts that we have currently open totaling a little, a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the return mail, we had two hundred and fifty five, uh, pieces of return mail. And that amounts to about seventy one thousand dollars to the city. So with that return mail, we start. We start working the address research and the skip tracing. Uh, and so then that'll, that's, that's, that's an ongoing process. The offense age, this is important to know. If you look at, uh, you know, year one or less, we're, we're getting placements that, uh, that. Uh, of one year or less, usually it's, uh, it's a smaller number, uh, but it, it's sixty four here. Um, and then the one to two years, there's two hundred and fifty two accounts that are, that are at least one year old. Uh, maybe even two. And then anything over three years, we've got. Nine hundred and two. So the big bulk of the accounts that we have are over three years old. In other words, they were old when we started collecting them. They were at least one year old. That doesn't mean we give up on them. We work them. But what I wanted to point out here is that what you went from nine oh two to one ninety nine to two fifty two and now sixty four. So now. The city, as far as the court system is concerned, is more of an ama- in a maintenance, a maintenance routine. And we're doing the old collections. That's where you wanted to be. When you first gave us the account, you gave us a whole bunch of old accounts and that was good. Those were problem accounts for the city. And we've been able to collect on some of those. But you can definitely see a difference. You've given us sixty four versus a couple of hundred. And so that, that's really good. Uh, the placement age just talks about how old the offense, uh, or the placement is versus the fence. Uh, sometimes there's a, there's a differential there, but it's an interesting chart to look at. It gives you some basic information. On page five. I wanted to point out this chart because this chart talks about individual monthly placements. And if you look at June of twenty twenty. This is where we really had some activity. So when, when we got the placements for June. We've got nine accounts that were, uh, that the, the offense was in two thousand sixteen. Uh, or thirty two percent of the accounts that were given to us were twenty sixteen, uh, accounts. Uh, we had, you know, seven from twenty seventeen, one from twenty eighteen and eleven from twenty nineteen. So we don't have too many of those where we have multiple years worth of, worth of placements. Most of them are very consistent, especially January, December, November. Uh, you look at the last quarter. You know, that, that also shows that you're giving us current accounts. You're in more of a routine, a maintenance routine. We've already got all the old accounts and we're working those. So again, uh, an interesting chart where we, we, we track the age of the placement and the year of the placement. On the, on page six. You will see, um, an example of. Each, we, we track the placement month and what we've done for each of those months. So in this example, I, I went to February of twenty twenty one. I'm sorry, of twenty twenty, February of twenty twenty. In February of twenty twenty, you gave us thirteen accounts totaling three thousand six hundred dollars. Of those accounts, two hundred and seven were canceled for some reason. The, the, uh, the defendant got our letter, got our phone call. They went in to talk to the judge. Uh, the judge, they were either paid or the judge thought, you know, maybe they removed a. A failure to appear and took the, took the fine. But in, in either case, there was an adjustment made. Uh, and so, um. Two hundred and seven dollars was canceled. There was an adjustment of twenty one. So the net placement was three thousand four hundred and thirty six. For February of twenty twenty. So that means, uh, we collected five hundred and twenty two of those placements or fifteen percent. Of that month's placements. And, and this activates every month. So we keep track of this every month. What each month's placement for the last, uh, you know, three years has done. So if you wanted to ask me what happened three years ago in January, I could tell you that. This just shows you, uh, just a, a quick summary of what's going on. So we're able to track that. Uh. The following page, page seven, looks like you're mountain climbing. Uh, this just, this just tells you what was collected each month. It, it varies. And you're going to see the peaks where we have the sweeps, uh, and, and the effect that the sweeps did. So. You'll see a little bit more consistency when we have the summer sweeps. Uh, so you'll see, you know, June and, and July and August kind of creep up there. So it'll look like, uh, not so much effort climbing a mountain. Uh, but it'll look a, a little bit better. Page eight talks about what we've collected for each of the years. Like, like I said, we started in twenty eighteen. Uh, pretty much October, November and December was what you collected about seven thousand two hundred dollars. In twenty nineteen, we had almost seventeen five. Uh, twenty twenty was not as good, but we had COVID, we had the hurricane and. You know, we want to, we want to get that extra sweep in there and try to, to find some more money. Uh, and you can see where we were for the month of January. We had about six hundred and fifty dollars collected. And then finally you see the total amount collected, uh, thus far, uh, thirty seven, five hundred and eleven dollars. You know, when we first started this, we weren't sure how it was going to work. We wanted to. Uh, you had just invested in, uh, some software to get your court system. Uh, you know, up to date. And then once you had the software, you could turn that information over to us. And we could start mailing and making phone calls on your behalf. Uh, that's thirty seven thousand dollars of found money. Uh, I think it was a, it was a good deal and, uh, we're looking forward to, to collecting more. Um, that's a quick snapshot of, of the activity as of, uh, the end of January, uh, this past January. And, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions on anything that I've covered thus far.
Great. I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. To you and your staff for all your hard work. Well, you've done a great job.
Thank you, Sophie. Appreciate it.
I, I agree, John. Uh, Lisa here. Good, good to see you. Um. I do, I do also congratulate you on, on the great work that is absolutely found money. Um, I do have one question though, and this is just for clarification for the people that, that weren't present at the meeting when we discussed, uh, how this works. Um, could you just clarify for the record, the, the total collections of thirty seven, five, eleven? Those are or are not net of y'all's fees? Because obviously you, you, you get paid for your great work. Um, but the amount that you show as total on page nine of thirty seven, five, eleven. Is that the net to the city or is that the gross? And if so, what if anything is coming out of it for your fees?
Good question. That, that is gross collection. Good question. That that is gross collection. Uh and and the way the fee works is it's it's statutory. Uh there's a thirty percent add-on fee. Um and so what what happens is if somebody owes a hundred dollars worth of fine. Then you all passed a resolution that added thirty percent. Uh took advantage of the criminal code, uh Texas Code Criminal Procedure. That makes the defendant pay for the cost of collection and not the city coffers, not the taxpayer. So it doesn't come from taxpayer funds. The defendant, the defendant that has not shown up. Uh that it that we need to go after uh pays that fee. So you get a hundred percent. Uh but that is a a gross fee. And then the thirty percent is added on. So if somebody owes a hundred dollars, you pass a resolution, now they owe a hundred and thirty. And the thirty is used to pay the cost of collection when collected. When collected.
Thank you, John. That's exactly what I wanted you to explain to the citizens.
You you're you're taking good care of of city to our taxpayer monies. Yes.
John, thank you very much. Another great presentation and another uh good reason as to uh the great job that the city council did. Uh several years ago to hire you uh to help us collect some of these funds. So again. Uh thank you. Counsel, any any other comments or or questions for John Gioro before we let him go?
Well, thank you very much. I hope you guys have a a successful meeting. Looks like you have a few things on the agenda. But uh congratulations on good work being done at the at the at the city. My brother lives there. And uh he's very proud of the city.
Thank you, John.
Y'all take care.
All right, let's uh let's move on here, and we have item number six. Uh discussion of possible action regarding concerns expressed by William Haraway. On the recently assessed drainage fees is Mr. Haraway on the line. Sylvia. Are they on the line?
Doesn't appear to have signed in, Mayor.
Okay, well, let's uh let's. Let's move on. Uh we have some sort of screening up uh. We're we're looking at Donna Fields' screen. Who's Donna Field? Can can Elsa, can you hear us?
Donna Field is one of our residents, Mayor.
Okay, there you go. It's gone. All right, here we go. Okay, so we'll come back to item number six and Mr. Haraway makes it so. Uh Sylvia, I noticed that we did not have any citizens' comments on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask for it now, okay? Is there any, is there any comments from uh our citizens that anybody wants to make?
If anybody said anything, they're they're muted.
Anybody raise their hands? Elsa, can you see anybody?
Is this on any subject more?
Not any subject that is not on the agenda, Mr. Gorgeous. Yes, so you have the floor if you need it.
Well, I uh you you don't have the bond election directly as an issue. But you have the survey as an issue, so I don't know, and and that's later, so I I.
Yes, you could wait till.
Whether it's on this, my comments.
You can wait, you can wait and make your comment during that that period of time. That is what the what that protector section is for, Mr. Gorgeous. Yes, sir.
That's fine.
Okay, not hearing any uh comments, public comments, and we'll move on to the next one. Uh item number seven, a discussion of possible action to accept city secretary's certification. Of unopposed candidates for the city general election originally ordered from May first, twenty twenty-one. And and quite frankly, item number eight is the same, so we will talk to about both seven and number eight. So counsel, uh basically what this is, is that since no one uh. Place their names on the ballot other than the uh incumbents. Uh there is uh. I guess a law, Sylvia, you could probably explain this and or or Jason, explain this, what this is all about. Of uh of not having an election for uh the council and or mayor. So Sylvia, can you explain a little bit more, please?
It is a statute. This election code. There's no opposition on any of the candidates. But I must first certify that there are no um, there's no opposition. And then we have the opportunity to go ahead and cancel that portion of the election. So this item is to let you know that I certified to you, the council, that there were no, there was no opposition to the candidates that filed. As the incumbents.
Okay, uh Jason, uh any comments on this particular, what what uh what do you see on this?
It's uh I I've looked at the proposed ordinance and it it states that there's no other propositions that are appeared to appear on the ballot. That's my understanding that the bond election would appear on the ballot, so I'm not sure if. If the if the secret city secretary certifies the um, if this certifies the election of the candidates. If that couldn't just be published as i- in the bond election itself as a. As as that someone's won is unopposed, I I'm not sure if that would be appropriate, too. I think that would probably be the preference. Uh but as far as the ordinance goes, I think it probably need to be reworded a bit to make sure, because. As worded, it said, whereas no propositions were to appear on the ballot for the general election, I don't know that that's accurate. And then on the the notice of the certification or the order of cancellation, i- in the Spanish version. There's a typo uh that um. That has a. The councilman, woman, Lisa Thompson, being certified.
Understood, yeah, that that's clear, but but Jason, here, if you remember correctly, when uh I ran unopposed, I think it was my second term. Uh we had an issue that I did not, I was not duly elected, if you remember that.
Right.
Portion of time, I was in no man's land uh for a brief period. Uh and and I'm concerned about that, especially with two council members and the mayor. Uh that all three of us are gonna be uh. In a no man's land type of scenario again, like we did. Uh I I forget the year. I think it was twenty seventeen.
Right.
Second term. Uh so I I do have a little concern about this. Uh I'm wondering. Counsel, should should we have this election? Uh whether there is no opponents and let's just see uh who votes for us or who doesn't. I mean, that's.
May I speak your, Mr. Mayor?
Sylvia, you do have the floor, Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you. Um I I have the same concerns as you do. And as a lawyer, I have extremely serious concerns about this. Um the position of mayor and city council member are elected positions. And. We need to be elected by the citizens, by a majority. And if that is a majority of one, it's a majority of one. It doesn't matter. We need to have votes cast or vote. Cast for us in order to be duly elected and for a city employee. Such as the city secretary to basically unilaterally say. Well, we, I I deem these people to be unopposed and and have won the election. There really hasn't been an election, so I think for so many reasons, constitutionally, legally. And uh to do the will of the people for elected positions, we need to have the election. And as far as as um holding an election, it's not as if we're going to be canceling the election. Anyway, because we're going to have a a the bond proposition on the election. So it's not gonna be any non, any any non nominal or material. Work involved to have the candidates on there. And I apologize, I do not know what the the cutoff date is, but there is also the issue of write-in candidates. And I don't know, uh personally, I I did not look it up. I apologize, I did not have time. I got stuck in a time crunch. Um but I don't know what and if uh there is any limitation on write-in ballots. And I think, once again, this is something the citizens need to decide. And I don't want, personally, I don't want to be. A councilwoman and have citizens think, well, she wasn't actually elected. And it's important.
And I suppose that was my point, because we still needed an election for certain issues. I'm not sure that. Uh we remove these issues. If there's no opponent, then typically you would just put unopposed on there and with a bubble to check.
Can I say something?
Yes, please, Sylvia, please.
Okay, bringing this item to you this evening. I did it after I had already conferred with the Secretary of State's office. And I know I shared some of those emails with you, Mayor, where they told me exactly how this was to occur.
Yes.
And what's gonna happen is the ballot will have the proposition at the top. But on the bottom will also say, unopposed candidates declared elected. And your names will be on there. And the Secretary of State's office also indicated that there's no vote for or against. But that you must show them on the ballot as unopposed candidates declared elected.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
The information that that I got from the Secretary of State's office.
I have a question for Sylvia real quick. So if. You know, and I haven't voted on it, but Sylvia, in that circumstance, would somebody who wants to write their selves in? As a write-in candidate, would that be an option?
Okay, a writing candidate can declare themselves as a writing candidate. They can't just write it on the ballot. There has to be a declaration that he will sign, he or she will be a writing candidate. And that um deadline has passed already, if I'm not mistaken. But you don't do any of this until that that deadline also has passed. But they have to declare themselves as a writing candidate.
I believe it's sixty-one days before the election, the general election was the deadline.
I I don't, I don't like the, I don't like the ballot. Already declaring a a winner. Um. It it needs to be an elected position and people need to either vote or not vote. If they choose to not fill in the bubble for that person's name, that's their prerogative. But as far as 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 putting them on there and saying they're unopposed, so they automatically win. I just, again, it's kind of like the no man's land and and says who, and and no offense to Sylvia. But you know, as as a lawyer, uh I can't tell you how many times I have dealt with governmental entities. And you talk to them about issue X and they give you one answer. And then a week later, you talk to them about issue X again, and they give you a totally different answer. And so I believe that we should avoid the problem altogether. And have the election, and that way there is no question whatsoever. As to whether or not. The council people up for reelection and the mayor were or were not duly elected. And not have to go into semantics and possibly another lawsuit. And spending more attorney's fees on on whether or not we were or were not duly elected in accordance with the statutes. And the legislation, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, what I need to do at this time right now is step out and go to uh. Send an email to the printer to stop the printing because the order for ballots was done today.
Yeah, I mean, that that doesn't uh. Uh we could reprint again. It's it's not a big deal, uh Sylvia. But again, counsel, I I hear Lisa Taylor's argument. I remember twenty seventeen. Uh I I I do, I do know that um also even even in the last election. Uh and tell me if I'm wrong, Sylvia, we had to allow write-in candidates. Even after the uh time passed, wasn't that, isn't that correct?
They, the the people that were. Write in, they just broke themselves in.
Yes, yes, but you still have to count them, right? Because because that's. You have to count.
You have to um declare yourself.
And we had to count them and they were part of our official tally and in our declaration of who won and who didn't win.
Right, right, okay. Uh so counsel, the the. So the the items. To accept the city secretary's certification of unopposed candidates for the city general election. Uh and then the other one is canceling the city general election. So let's talk about the first one here. What what I think. Councilwoman Taylor is stating that she wants the little box next to her name to people to vote for her and she wants to be counted. I think that's what she's saying. Am I, am I saying that correctly?
Your apps, yes, you're, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, you are.
All right, counsel, any comments on this, any? Any anything else, any other council member wants to uh discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to just uh.
I'm sorry, go ahead, uh Mayor Proten Galavon, please.
Yes, I I get, I gotta agree with everybody. Um I mean, people take voting very seriously, regardless if they're unopposed or not. We need to give them the right, the opportunity to go over there and and vote for the candidate of their choice. And um if we take that away from them, they basically, we're we're trumping on their their rights to vote. And I think we need to give them that opportunity, and I'd like to make a motion. I don't know if it's too early or somebody else wants to speak.
Go ahead.
But um.
You're not too ready. Go ahead.
Whoever else wants to speak, go ahead. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to uh set aside this for now, and uh I I just can't agree with it.
George, would we make a motion or just if nobody motions uh or um.
Okay, so.
Makes a motion, then it doesn't.
Here here's, here's what uh Mayor Proten Galavon's motion is. He is uh, he is not uh accepting the city secretary's certification. That's what his motion is, that he is, that he is not accepting uh the unopposed candidate's. Certification.
Requiring that and there be an election held on the.
Okay, well, that but may, that that's not what's on the on the agenda. The agenda right now is that.
Let's not waste any more time on this. We, you know, the consensus is, we don't wanna do it. No action taken on it, let's move on.
All right, so let, the motion is to not to accept. Not to accept the city secretary's certification of unopposed candidates. That way, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second to not accept it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm opposed.
You're opposed, Eric? Say aye, and are you opposed or for? Sorry.
I just wanna move on.
Okay, so you are opposed to the certification. On there, is that correct? So so the item does not, it it does, okay, so it is not acceptable. Item number eight, I'm assuming that we are not going to cancel the general election for May, May first. Is that the motion that somebody wants to make?
I would move that we do not cancel the election.
Does anybody want to second that or anybody have any discussions? Counselwoman, time a second. All in favor, say aye. And the opposed?
Aye.
So we do have Eric Hoffel poses, so we are going to have a general election. We are not going to.
Aye.
Uh accept the certification of an opposed candidate. So we will have the election. We will have the citizens make a check mark on the unopposed candidate. So all right, so let's move on. Uh item number nine, discussion of possible actions to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February tenth. And the regular meeting of February sixteen. Any comments, counsel?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed the bits. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed the bits from both of those meetings, and I would like to report that I found no errors or typos. Very good job.
I did not either. Any other comments?
Miracle, priceless miracle.
I make a motion that the minutes is red.
All right, I have, do I need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, discussion of possible action regarding restrictions set by Governor Abbott's order as it relates to open meetings and City Hall. Counsel, basically, what I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand, Governor Abbott has opened up Texas and has removed the mandate of masks. However, what he has not done is that he has not opened up public meetings. He still has the suspension of open meetings act. So, we will continue because, you know, city council has been closed since the pandemic to the public, and, and things have been going fine. Now, I respect Sylvia's decision on this to keep it closed. This is her house. Counsel, we do not go to the City Hall every day. She does, she wants to keep it closed, and I support that decision. So, we will keep it closed until further notice. We might make another decision come April. But for now, we will keep it closed, and we will continue to do the meetings via Zoom and still have the, the City Hall chamber closed to the public because of, of that's, it's, it's the right thing to do for our employee. So, just want to make sure you guys understand that. There's really not an action item here unless, counsel, you guys have an opposition to the decision to keep City Hall closed.
No opposition, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the safety and welfare of our, our city staff and employees and everybody that, that works there is, is paramount to us physically gathering just for meetings when we can do it on Zoom.
Correct, right. Any other comments? I need a motion on this particular item that there is no action to be taken.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number eleven, discussion of possible action to approve a resolution approving the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update. As you know, we started the process of moving from the Harlingen Hazard Mitigation to Cameron County's. And this is basically just a resolution for me to sign and to join Cameron County's Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Any, any questions, concerns, or comments?
No.
Need a motion, guys?
Uh. I make a motion. Make a motion to allow you to sign and approve that resolution? I make a motion to approve that resolution. I need a second.
Second, the motion to approve the resolution.
That's one Taylor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion of possible action and recommendation to fill vacancy in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, I thought I saw John Top on here earlier. John, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, John, please.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to address the council on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have not had a full complement of your appointees for the last five meetings. We've lost contact and believe that Paul Powers no longer resides in the city of Palm Valley. So the board would like to recommend to the city council that you appoint Scott Nelson to fill that vacancy. Scott and his wife reside at nineteen hundred Mango Circle. Scott is a certified EMS. He is the EMS Program Director and Innen Dean of Health Professionals at Texas Southmost College. He's a member of our church and has taught Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace University with me for now for several years. He's a very good worker. He's interested in contributing to the Palm Valley community by serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So we would appreciate your consideration.
Counsel, any questions, concerns, or comments?
The only comment I have is thank you, John.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Um, looking out for the Parks and Recreation Department. I completely trust your judgment and disappointment, and have my support.
Thank you.
I thought I heard Mayor Proten make a motion.
I said.
Jerry Wade, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consent agenda, and item A is pretty self-explanatory. Item B, this is a discussion only regarding survey results related to the issuance of bonds and related funding options. Again, we have John Top to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address the city council, this time on the matter of the bond issue. In early February, the mayor asked me to survey residents to help the council gauge the public opinion regarding the bond issue. So the mayor, city council, and the city financial advisors all asked, they, they, they all asked that in the survey, I present just the facts because they wanted the council to know the honest opinion of what the citizens thought. So I developed the survey that had three options. The goal is to provide you feedback from our citizens on the timing of the completion and the funding of the debt service of the bond issue, if it were to pass. So we had the surveys numbered with a color number on every one of them just to make sure that there weren't any duplications of surveys. The city staff carefully distributed one survey to each residential and business address within the city, and they did affirm to me that no addresses received more than one survey. Sylvia had seven hundred and twenty-five surveys printed and delivered on February twenty-fourth. So on March the eighth, I collected all the surveys that were returned to City Hall by the deadline, and my assistant and I tallied the results. There were one hundred and forty surveys turned in, which is a twenty percent response, which is, I mean, as surveys go, that's a good response. So I provided the city staff with, with this report for your packets, and let me review the survey results for you. Forty-two percent, or fifty-nine, responded with a preference of the nine-year completion. Twenty-six percent, or thirty-six, responded with a preference of a three-year project completion. And ten percent, or fourteen, responded with a preference of the six-year project completion. Twenty-one percent, or thirty, responded with their own, none of the above. They actually added a box and checked and said, none of the above. One person didn't follow directions, didn't give us his, you know, didn't give us, you know, any preference, so we could not determine that one. But I, I thought it was interesting that some of the "none of the above" respondents wrote some comments. Nine of them wrote that they needed more information, which I think is very important. Either they needed more evidence, or they wanted more analysis. Five of them wrote that they wanted more funding options or grants researched. Three of the respondents included letters to the mayor and council, of which I believe you have in your packets, because I asked the city staff to make copies to include that, so that you could see what those letters said. One of the six-year respondents wrote a very nice note. He said, "Thank you for having the courage and the integrity to move forward with this and the drainage." So in conclusion, you might note that seventy-eight percent of the returned surveys chose one of the three project completion options. And of the twenty-one percent that wrote they didn't prefer any of the options provided, most requested more information to be able to make an informed decision. I'd like to suggest that the city provide a few public forums, you know, with a PowerPoint presentation and some handouts, possibly, if you can have open meetings, do that. If not, we need some Zoom meetings for anybody that doesn't feel comfortable with an open meeting. But I would suggest that the mayor and the council, the city engineer, the bond council, and our financial advisors all be present at these forums. So, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be of service to the city, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, John. I just, I, I, I want to make sure that the citizens that are on this call, that this city council, city staff, in particular this mayor, is not in favor or not against this particular bond election. We just want to make sure that you have all the necessary information that you will need to make a good, solid decision when it comes down to Election Day, May the first, or early voting, as we see it. I do want the council to pay particular attention to a letter that was written by two of our residents, which I thought was probably the best letter I've ever read from a citizen, and that's from Laura Boyd and John Vanderburg. A great, great letter, great bullet points. Now, most of those bullet points have been answered before in previous city council meetings in one form or another. I do definitely agree that we need to have some open forums here in the future, and I am working on having one at the country club, March twenty-ninth, and probably a second one, the, 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 the next Monday thereafter, depending on, on how many people are wanting to participate. And, and I'm going to use this letter from Ms. Boyd and Mr. Vanberg as a basis of answering the questions, because basically every, every bullet point here is a great question, and rightly so, that should be answered by, by us. Like I said, we have already answered these questions. But again, it's, it's always good to, to revisit these particular area. So, um, that is planned, we will have that. Again, like I said, the city council, the city staff, and, and the city mayor is not in favor or not against. We're just trying to prevent, to, to provide you all the necessary information in order for you to make a good decision. Twenty-two million dollars as a liability to the city of Palm Valley is not a, 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 it's a hard tilt to swallow. I, I understand that as, as a property owner myself here, it is. But I do understand, I do have some insights. I do know what, what our situation is regarding our infrastructure in our city. And that's my job to educate everyone else that wants to know what's going on with our system underneath the streets and, and let them make a good sound decision. So, with that said, I believe, Mr. Gorgeous, you wanted to make a comment on this particular item. You are on mute, so if you want to have a couple of minutes, I'll be, I'll be happy to give that to you. Mr. Gorgeous.
All right, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah. Listening in and sitting in on this meeting, I need to say, start out by saying I'm very impressed with the professionalism of the city council and the city administration. And in many years, it's a joy to see that type of professionalism and intelligence here at the meetings. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I have, one way or another, been involved with the development out here since it started nineteen, late nineteen sixties. I've lived out here since eighty-two. Um, and this, to me, is the important fact of where we are. In the early development, the lots were bought primarily by retirees from the Midwest. They bought those and built the first homes. The Harlingen Development Corporation, which was a group that put together the investors that did build the haciendas, and the apartments were built, some by the corporation and others by individuals. But the city was basically run immediately because their interest was the country club by the retirees. They became the, not only the officers of the country club, but after the city of Harlingen twice refused to annex the area, and the citizens voted to incorporate the town, they ran the town. And they had two primary objectives. One, keep the taxes low as possible. I retired here, I'll be here till I die, or else move back up north, and I don't want to spend any money. And that same philosophy pertained to maintenance. And in essence, maintenance was zero, at least up until the mid-nineties or the year two thousand, the first twenty-five or thirty years, at which time those people did either pass away or move back. And since then, the average age of our citizens have gone down. We are now, if you took a survey, I'm not sure what it is, but it's, the majority of the houses out here are people that have lived in this area for quite some time, or moved in here to raise their children and be permanent residents. But that, there were two things also that, there were the, the other thing, and that, that not know, one was no maintenance, keep the taxes low. The other was, we want public safety. And basically, most of the city's money that was collected from taxes went to the police department. It was a very unusual situation. This area is three hundred and eighty-nine acres. About a hundred and thirty of it is the golf course. So basically, the city of Palm Valley is somewhere around two hundred and fifty, sixty, sixty-five acres. It will never be an inch bigger. It's landlocked, three sides with Harlingen, and on the north by Primera. Virtually all the revenue comes, well, I, you, you, he read it earlier and I wrote it down, it's seventy-six percent from property taxes, twelve percent from sales taxes, which is mostly the country club. You're never going to have any more sales taxes to speak of. There's those few vacant lots next to City Hall where Maverick Market used to be, to, could be a developed. On the other side of the road, it's all the country club fence. If we took the fence down, the houses back up to it. Same way with Primera. So that's in the city of Harlingen, they collect more revenue from sales tax than they do property tax. You collect five percent of your revenue from city fines. On the other hand, you spend, believe it or not, right at fifty percent of the budget goes to public safety. It, it, uh, twenty percent goes to public works and, and the balance, which is some thirty percent to administration. The issue here is, and I think when you, you're talking, talk about twenty-two million, you don't do that spur of the moment or quickly. And no matter what you've done so far, at least in. And no matter what you've done so far, at least information has been kind of spur of the moment. Uh, it's a big deal, but it's more than uh, this bond issue alone because down the road, seven or eight years, I I suggested ten years ago or more that you have a program to keep the streets, budget the money, raise the taxes and rate the streets and keep them maintained. You're going to not only have this big tax increase, hundred and seventy-three percent tax increase. You're going from fifty-two and a half, passing up Harlingen sixty-two, and you're going to be a hundred and thirty-three cents. I think it's the fifty and a half plus the eighty. I'm rounding off here. That is a big thing, but I think that you need to give a much deeper investigation of what you're doing. You have to take into consideration that that's not the only thing that's going to need fixing. These pipes, I agree, they need fixing. But you have other things coming up. This is thirty years on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house that you all use as an example. For each house, that's thirty-two thousand dollars over the life of those of the bond. And you're heading, in my opinion, if you leave the strategy like it is, you're heading for a train wreck. There are some options. I hesitate to bring those up tonight, but number one, I do think your bond issue, no matter if you pick one, two or three, is going down. Virtually everybody I talked to said, oh, it's too much money. I'm voting against it. So I it let it happen, I guess, because after it happened, maybe then you'll sit down and take a stronger look at where you are and what is the long-range solution? Because you have a long-range problem in your current uh, expenditures for this year. And again, I'm going by the auditor's report and the figures I wrote down. Public Works was a hundred and forty thousand. That was just twenty percent of the budget versus fifty percent of the budget on police. So uh, it's, you you don't just spend the twenty-two million bucks. You you there is an advantage right now and that is that interest rates are low. And uh, uh, municipal bond rates have never been more favorable, but that's not a justification to race into this thing and wind up down the road with exorbitant taxes when you have to have another bond issue or the city's going to be pieced together. I appreciate the fact that you let me talk and you let me talk early and uh, I'm all for the area. However, we solve it, but we need to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorgeous. And before I make a comment here, any any other citizen wants to make a comment on the up and coming bond election? I don't see any hands raised.
Mayor, can I make a motion then to accept the consent agenda?
Uh, I'll I'll accept your motion, but I just want to make sure, I I just want to make one last comment on this particular uh, item. Again, like I said, uh, I'm not for, I'm not against this. However, this issue has been an ongoing issue for many years, like Mr. Gorgeous has stated. Uh, also counsel, if you remember uh, when we were trying to buy uh, the Maverick Maverick Market uh, next door, there was a was a survey. Uh, and the number one issue with our citizens was drainage. Well, you as a council, we addressed that issue and we've got those issues uh, under control and we are going to fix those issues and we have the money to do it. Uh, and we are, we are starting those projects. The second uh, most important items was water pressure and sewage system. Uh, so we are, as a council, we are, we are addressing that issue and we're advising our citizens what needs to be done to fix it and how much it's going to cost. It's i- i- it is, the cost is what it is. And and if we want to fix it, that's what it's going to cost us to fix it. Uh, and that's what we uh, have presented. Our financial advisors have produced those numbers. Our our consulting engineers have done the due diligence and 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 has given us uh, all the information that we need to to fix these issues if we want them fixed. And that's where the citizens of Palm Valley uh, will have to uh, come uh, on May the first to tell us how to proceed. With that said, uh, again, like I mentioned, uh, we will have uh, open forums. We will try to educate and provide facts uh, and so everybody can make a a decision, a proper decision. Uh, because as Mr. Gorgeous says, twenty-two million dollars for a city of our size is a hard pill to swallow and I totally understand that. I really do. I'm I'm a homeowner myself. I that that pill is hard to swallow too, but I do understand what the issue is. Okay? Uh, the other thing, the the last comment I wanted to make uh, is briefly on the last subject on Governor Abbott as well as the federal uh, uh, one-point-nine trillion uh, dollar that our wonderful President Biden has just passed. Uh, the citizen, the city of Palm Valley, it is uh, supposed to receive uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars out of that one-point-nine trillion dollars here uh, very soon. Now, what we don't know is, is it going to come straight to us? Is it going to go through the state of Texas? What are we going to use? What are we going to be able to use that money for is still all o- uh, up in the air. So I will keep you abreast of all that, counsel. Again, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for the city of Palm Valley is coming our way. Still don't know what we can spend it on. Still don't know whether it's coming straight to us or we're going to have to go through the state of Texas. So time will tell what what's going to happen. So with that said, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda unless some other council has another uh, comment on the consent agenda.
I mo- I'm mover second to accept the consent agenda.
I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries and I need uh, Mr. Hoff, can you make the final motion, please?
However, Mr. Hoff, before Mr. Hoff does that, I have an extremely important matter that I need to be to br- bring up that is not on the agenda. So um, I would like to ask the council in joining me to wish our mayor an extremely happy birthday yesterday. And uh, hope that he made it a very memorable one and thank him from taking uh, away from his much-needed time off and away from from work to sit in and be here present for this council meeting, even though he's celebrating his birthday.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that very, very much. And yes, I am celebrating my birthday. This is my birthday week. Uh, so uh, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Hoff, Mr. Hoff.
Happy birthday, Mayor. I make a motion and the meeting.
And he, anyone wants a second? I believe this uh, Councilwoman Thompson makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. We'll talk soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome, yeah.